Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the La Cuenca City Council, February 5th, 2024, City Council meeting. Again, we always start with our caucus. Gives the council members an opportunity to discuss and debate, ask questions of regarding the agenda items. We'll start with Agenda Item Number Three. The other ones are administrative. Communication from Division Department Heads Director Park Recreation Request City Council Authorize Use of Victory Playground and Soccer Mini Pitch by Independent Health Soccer for Success Program. They provided proof of insurance. Any council member have any, anything, any questions or any discussion on that? Or Director Laxo, if you have anything you want to add, you're welcome to add.
Nothing to add. We run this program with soccer for success all the time. They run a great program.
Any council members on that? Item number four, City Controller Request City Council Provenance Refund Assistance to Firefighters Grant Budget Line Amount of $30,616.25 Was the bid award for firefighting hoses and now that was approved the last meeting January 22nd, 2024. Any council members have any questions on that? Our City Controller is excused from this evening's meeting. And there is an ordinance that has been provided, so. Any council members questions? Not? Item number five, again, City Controller by City Council of the Retirement of Marsha Collins City Assessor's Office effective January 19th, 2024. And Retirement of Richard Judas, City Attorney, effective January 31st, 2024. We wish both of them Godspeed and congratulations on their retirement. You're very instrumental in the everyday operations here in City Hall and I'm sure to be significantly missed. Any members have anything to say or any questions, comments on item number five? Item number six, again, City Controller Request City Council Provenance Transfer Funds For the General Fund to Special Revenue Fund, you want a $70,000 For the memorandum submitted by Dan Gurk and DPW Foreman. And I believe, Dan, it was, they're going to be needed for additional repairs and such to equipment as primarily as a result of this snowstorm?
No, it's for all the sanitation vehicles, for the garbage trucks.
For the garbage trucks?
Yes, for the garbage trucks. On the original budget line was for $17,000. We've already used that up. We had some more cost of repairs as those trucks are getting older and we have some repairs coming up.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Anyone, any council members have any questions on item number six or the related ordinance? Item Six A. Now moving to item number seven, City Commissioner Request City Council Review The Memorandum and Approve the Ordinance to Refund Local Waterfront Revitalization Project Amount of $65,000. Fifty will be reimbursed to New York State Environmental Protection, excuse me, grant. The remaining $15,000 is the city's contribution. And that is to be used for minority and women-owned business enterprises. Any council members have any questions or any comments on item number seven, together with the related ordinance at seven A?
I just look what, what we're just going towards. I know the revitalization project is kind of not complicated, but there's a lot of new parts to it. Can you explain what La Cuenca is?
Yeah, so the entire project involves updating the 2018 strategic document that never got finalized as far as the update of the plan. So this, this money would go towards the Wendell Engineering Project Management portion of that. Any of the operations involved with public input, public meetings, public communications. The women and minority-owned business component of it is pretty much straightforward as it says, some of that activity needs to be run per the grant requirement, run by a woman and minority-owned firm. So we've got Wendy Savadi, who is WWS Planning. She is a partner of the Wendell Engineering process that is overseeing the entire LWRP project. So it's really all of the operation that's involved with updating the plan, informing the public, going back and forth with the Department of State, you know, as that document comes up and down. So if there are questions, for example, that the Department of State would have on any particular area, Wendell is the first line of defense in that, answers us before us as we can. If not, then they bring in the appropriate areas, starting with me all the way through. So really, it's the entire operation from start to finish of updating the document and getting public opinion. And then, again, the women and minority-owned business component is just slicing out a piece of that project to go to a woman and minority-owned firm. Does that make sense?
Anyone else have any questions on item number seven? Not moving on to item number eight, again, City Controller Request City Council Approve the Ordinance and Transfer of Funds for CDBG Grant for Women with Abnormality and Paving Project, the amount of $260,000. The bid was awarded last time to, last meeting to 716 Contracting. Any council members have any questions on item number eight and the related ordinance of eight A?
Yes, Mr. Council President.
Yes, sir.
On the Certificate of Action Taken at the Council Meeting that I received, I think one of the figures here is transposed. In the minutes, said the project was going to be $254,163. And I think they're asking for $260 in case there's a couple overruns or paid orders. But on the Certificate of Action Taken at the Council Meeting, I wasn't here the last time, but I just happened to read it. Says here, $245,163. So I think there's four and a five or what the.
I suppose.
I'll check it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may have to be amended when it's finalized. But thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, and then in the minute, maybe as long as we're talking about that, it says here, second half application of $250,000. However, the app was not received. And then the next sentence, it says, if this $150,000 does not come through, I think the $250,000, I remember, I'm pretty sure when we did it, was $150,000 we got and the other $150,000 we didn't get. What, you remember that?
That may, or we have to be corrected also in the minutes. Okay, so, thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember, sir. Anyone else have any comments on item number eight? Eight A? Moving on to item number nine, Former Director of Public Safety Request City Council Through Sale of 2021 Ford Police Intercepter Utility Vehicle Procedure Place La Cuenca Operating Budget Police Department Account. Anyone have any questions or any comments on item number nine?
Is the, is there no use for this particular vehicle?
Well, they want to send it to auction before major repairs. They're looking at some major repairs. So before they start sinking money into a vehicle that's that old, I said, it's only a three, yeah, it's a three years old, but it's run all the time. So they send it to auction where they can still get some money off to put toward a new
Okay, anyone else have any questions on item number nine? Now moving to item number 10, Director of Development, Marketing, Public Information Director Request City Council Name the City's Planning and Zoning Board As Lead Agency For Estate Environmental Quality Review Seeker Part One Regarding The Sale Of City-Owned Property On Alliance Drive To Empire Building Diagnostic At It Fits Concrete. And to that end, I would ask Chuck that maybe you give us a little background on that. It would seem maybe that planning and zoning board might be the appropriate entity to handle that, but there may be related things you want to mention to us.
Yeah, so as background, Alliance Drive is two parcels of land, about 4.7 acres on the north and 2.1 on the south. Back in, I believe it was August or September of last year, this body approved a sale of the 4.7 acre parcel to the demolition company and It Fits Concrete. The demolition company is getting 3.4 acres to build an extension of their campus at 400 Ingham Avenue, which is right on the side. And It Fits Concrete is building a small sales and service operation. So that's what the project is. What Seeker is, is the environmental review process, which governs pretty much any zoning, planning, and development activity. And it's pretty much anything from land disposition to land development or changing of zoning and planning laws. So we, as the seller of this city-owned property, have to comply with Seeker in terms of the disposition of property. So what Seeker is in this case is we would be affirming for the planning board that the project is consistent with the zoning of the site, is consistent with the activity in the area, and that there would be compliance with the environmental statutes and laws that govern development in that area. The 4.7 acre site was remediated by the city in 2002 with a state grant, New York State DEC Cleanup Grant. And out of that came a very prescriptive set of guidelines for how that land could be developed. So the developers, both the demolition company and It Fits, will need to go into a more in-depth Seeker process, once they put shovel into the ground, to use that phrase. And they will need to comply, that Seeker review will need to comply with the DEC site plan that's in place for that. And I am connecting them to them being the It Fits and the demolition people, to the, to the DEC folks that will guide them through this. The 2.1 acre site to the south is not being developed, we're keeping that under city ownership because there is still ongoing conversation about developing passive recreation on the Bethlehem Steel Renaissance Commerce Park site, which may include Smoke Creek. And so clearly, until that idea takes shape, and because it sits near a wetland area anyhow, the decision was made to just keep that one in inventory until we know where the passive recreation component is going. But this particular request that you have in front is to make the planning board the lead agency, so there needs to be a lead agency involved in this action. And what we anticipate them issuing is something called a no doc, a no declaration, meaning that there is no negative impact to the project. If there was a positive declaration, then that means that there's some environmental or other problem that we would need to be addressing. But that should, is definitely not the case with the land sale and should not be the case with the future development because they're pretty much restricted by the guidelines that the DEC has put in place for any, any development of the property.
Right, thank you. On that topic, anyone have any questions?
I assume the, I'm sorry, the, the planning and zoning board would work closely with the law department in.
Law and development.
Law and development, so all together as a unit.
Yeah. Yeah, and we did one of these, I know so much comes before this body, but we did a, a short form seeker through this body to the planning board with the Lehigh Field because of the fact that it is in a, believe it or not, a historic preservation area of the Brownfield. We had to get the interested parties to sign off on the connection of the drainage from the eastern end of the property into the sewer line at Lehigh. So we've done, we have done this on a small scale before.
Anyone else have any questions on that?
You are in the planning boards.
I, no, I can no longer, I oversee that now. I can no longer sit on it, but I oversee it. So Debbie, Debbie Skolsky took my spot there, so I take the role that Lauren and previously Rich had with overseeing that. So I'm a non-voting member, but I, I mean, pretty much for all intents and purposes, development will work with, you know, Kathy Galanti in, in this case, to work through the document, make sure they understand it, present it to them, and involve them in any way they need to be involved to make their decision.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, if, I was on the planning board for 16 years before I was on council and it's normal for the planning board to be in charge of the seeker. I mean, when we did the windmills, I was on the planning board. We were lead agency and normally most projects are passed through. And it's, they asked him about how much water are you going to use, where sewer lines are and stuff, you know, they want to know how much, you know, electricity you're going to use, stuff like that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's pretty.
Yeah, that's the, that's the environmental factor. And there's obviously the, you know, does the project fit the zoning and construction of the neighborhood? And Mr. Council President, I have to apologize because I know this, this typo was, was probably my fault. It says in your, in the document, to make the planning and zoning board the lead agency. I'm only asking that the planning board be the lead agency, not zoning.
And actually, it could be the city council, right?
You, you, yes. In fact, it's, it's a, it's a good point that you bring up because when we did the, when we did this for Lehigh, we did have that conversation about whether it should be the city council or the planning board, and this body determined it was best with the planning board.
Yeah.
But yes, you, you can be the lead agency, the city itself could be the lead, you can appoint the city itself to be the lead agency.
But as councilmember, sir, I can mention, it would be a logical choice, would be the planning.
I would agree 1,000% with that.
Now, Chuck, at this point in time, given the fact that we're ready to start the formal meeting, is there anything on a timely basis that you wish to discuss with the council on the other?
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind, if I could just have a minute to update on a situation that is causing some inconvenience, more than some inconvenience, a great inconvenience to the folks in the first ward along Ridge Road between Wilkes-Barre and Center Street. So for, for a couple of months now, there's been a pretty strong, very strong odor coming from the public sewer line. And Mayor's Office Development, Code Enforcement, ECIDA, Erie County Sewer, anybody who's got business activity in that area have been trying to work together to figure out what the problem is. The problem is, is been identified as the northwest corner of the Bethlehem Steel Complex where Sucro Sourcing sits and where the Port of Buffalo, there's 12 separate companies that operate in the Port of Buffalo. So, and again, I'm no sewer expert, but this is, this is the education I got today. It's amazing what you learn in this job. So in the northwest corner, those sewer lines on that part of the property are private. So they are owned respectively by, there's, there's a pumping station that is, belongs to Sucro, and there's a pumping station that belongs to the Port of Buffalo property. Those private sewer lines run east underneath Route 5, towards Commerce Park, Commerce Drive, North Gates Avenue, however you know it as. That's where they connect in to the public sewer line. So what the source of the odor is, is they've identified it as in the Sucro private line, there was stale water, stale wastewater sitting in the private line that turned septic. When it pushed to the public space, that's the odor. So the Sewer Department has required both Sucro and the Port of Buffalo to replace their pumping stations, to maintain them, to fix them and maintain them. And, but even after that was done, the odor still existed. And Sewer went back and did another investigation. And what they found was necessary on Sucro's line, not so much with the Port of Buffalo line, is that they needed a clear flush out of that line. Because the, the toxic residual waste was still sitting, if you, you know, think about, it was just sitting around. So no matter how much more of the pumping was happening, you still had the remnants of waste, right? So Sucro is, has a contractor coming in the week of February 12th to clean that out, weather permitting. But they are being required to clean that out because that is the only way that that is going to permanently remove that odor. In the meantime, the Sewer Department has tried to put a, they call it a sodium hydrochloride mix to try and minimize the smell, but clearly it's not working and clearly it's not a long-term solution. So when you think of, you know, what's, what's happening there, it's not just, you know, regular sewer activity, but it's a food processing plant. So there is constant washing and watering of sugar product running out of that area. And as that thing ferments and ages, it doesn't age well. So that is the cause of the problem. The Sewer Department, Code Enforcement are all over this. I do want to say it was a huge inconvenience to anybody who lived and worked on there. That was not good, okay? So, you know, tremendous apology to that. And if I was anybody who lived or worked in and around that area, we would all complain too. It was, it was not right. That said, it's, it's important to note that, and people can have whatever opinions they want, but this was neither intentional or malicious, nobody did this on purpose. That, that land has sat vacant for 40 years. And nobody has really, you know, until now, kind of understood what the impact of, you know, modern manufacturing would have done on the sewer line. Nobody would have anticipated the degree of problem that they're having here. So, you know, Sucro is, if there's any concern that we have, is their understanding of just how expedient they need to move to get that second part of it done. Because they, you know, they, some of them are a little more understanding of the situation than others, but, you know, they're really, until they actually got a feel for it, didn't quite understand how it was impacting the, the local community. So Joe Fiegel from Erie County Sewer, John Capley, and his people from ECIDA, the Mayor's Office, all of us, you know, we're, we're all involved in doing this. So now that we know, now that they know, they're being watched. And that's, that's, that's the cause of the problem. Solution is almost there. And, and we do apologize, even though it was not the city's doing, we're going to apologize on behalf of, you know, a development project that we helped bring in that, that caused quite a bit of inconvenience for the people who live and work in that area.
It's good that it's been uncovered and it's being addressed, and we certainly appreciate your being on top of that. One question, however, is from this point forward, who has the jurisdiction to inspect the pump stations for the Port of Buffalo and for Sucro?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna make that a coordinated effort between the county and the city. So the code enforcement guys are going to be responsible for maintaining that dialogue with, with Sucro and the Port of Buffalo. I don't want to just single one of them out. With making sure that that maintenance schedule, that regular maintenance schedule is, is performed. And then clearly, now that the county sewer is aware of it, they will be making their, not necessarily inspections, but check-ins to make sure that that happens.
If I may.
Yes.
I, I have also been in contact with Steve and Joe Fiegel from Erie County. They've been very responsive. It was probably late summer that I made contact with them and I, you know, I've even encouraged, they've encouraged me to have residents contact the certain hotline around the clock. The smell hasn't been reduced, even with the cold temperature. You would think that it would, you know, settle. It hasn't. And they did make it very clear that it's not an Erie County line, it's private line, and they're doing the best that they can to work with the companies that are developing and having their private lines somehow merge towards the Ridge, Wilkes-Barre area. And yes, the last conversation I had was just Friday. And in regards to the sanitation department having to come in and completely clear it out, that's all they're waiting for, and hopefully that will completely remedy the issue. Otherwise, we're back to the drawing board.
Well, to that point, if I, if I may, you were, because you raised two good points. Right now, again, this, this sewer line runs from west to east, as I mentioned. Part of the infrastructure development going on, on the site is to move, or to install a new sewer line area directly on the Commerce Park, which would allow Sucro to, instead of running all the way east, would run east and then south, okay? However, what's important to note is, especially because of the, what they're producing and the byproduct of that production, regular maintenance is going to be key because it doesn't matter whether it continues to run towards Gates Ave, towards North Gates, or whether it runs south into the new thing. If it, if it, if it is not properly maintained, and this is not coming from Chuck Clark, the sewer expert, but from the, the Joe Fiegel, if that is not maintained properly, it's just going to build up again. And no matter whether it's a new line or an old line, you're still going to have that issue. So to Mr. Morano's point, it's going to have to be regularly monitored and, and reported on because clearly that was, that was toxic.
Is there, is there a specific treatment that can be used during the compost time?
Well, that is something that the contract, that the person that's going to come in to help them will, will guide them on.
Not right where it is now as far as coming in to sanitize, but pre-treatment prior to.
That is a conversation Joe was going to have with them. It's not something we're having, we don't have that expertise, but that is something that the sewer management would guide.
Because I'm just looking at it as, this is the beginning of their, they're not at full capacity yet.
No, not even close.
So.
Right.
It's only going to get worse. And that's what I, that was the issue that I raised with both Steve and Joe. I said, I'm afraid of what is to come. If this is only the first year where they've been in full production to what they're limited to right now, it can only be far more byproduct than now.
Without getting graphic about it, it basically was just, you know, residual waste all the way around. And, and all that did was just, you know, compound itself. So been identified, again, does not excuse the situation one bit, but, you know, we're, we're happy it's been identified, we know what the solution is, and now it's a matter of getting the fix in enforcement.
And not only do I thank everyone that's involved in rectifying it, but the residents for being so patient, you know, there's only so much that I can calm their nerves by, you know, there's only so much time that can go without having them be extremely satisfied.
Well, for a little while, it was, it was tough to identify where the source of it was. I mean, it was early on, but it was tough to identify where that was coming from.
And then the clinic that's moving in right in there, that's not something that they want their patients to have to run into.
You had clinics, you had restaurants, you had, you know, other shopping going on there, or you just had people going to services or school. So no matter what it was, even if you were just walking, it was not, it was not good. But, you know, be that as it may, this was closed with its, it was just not purposeful. It was kind of a byproduct of, of, you know, growth and expansion. We now understand it, and it'll be fixed.
My product is a great word.
That's exactly what it was.
To your other point, I mean, right, is we're fortunate, we are having hope with it, because it would be compounding.
It was, it was horrible in the summer, and I honestly thought that, you know, just my own logic was, okay, winter, we shouldn't smell it the way it is. You know, it's kind of like the Chariot Effect downtown. If it's too cold, you don't smell it. When the temperature is just right, you do. It doesn't matter how cold it is, I can smell it.
It's bad, but on it, identified, and keep our fingers crossed that this is it.
All right.
Thanks so much for the update, Chuck. All right, to that end, I will formally call to the regular meeting, February 5th, 2024, some of the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Controller Do Take The Role.
Moklaki, present. Anderson. Moretti.
Here.
Serdy.
Present.
Morano.
Here.
Law.
Here.
Development Marketing.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
The Controller's been excused.
Hearing from citizens, nothing. Thank you, Jane. As far as approval of minutes, I would move that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2024, as amended by the suggestion of a council member, Serdy. We need a second on that.
Would you repeat your answer?
Repeat what?
What you said about commit.
We adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2024, as amended by the Take a hold.
Motion by Morano, second by Moklaki, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2024, as amended by suggestion of council member, Serdy. Moklaki, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdy.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Erie 5-0. Partner Reports 1 and 2.
Item was receive and file, Partner Reports 1 and 2. Ready, say.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Partner Reports 1 and 2. Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file park mental reports, one and two, exclusive. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of Parks and Recreation requests the city council authorize the use of Victory Playground and the Soccer Mini Pitch by Independent Health Soccer for Success Program. Ooh, the insurance has been provided.
Random was to approve request.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City Controller requests the city council approve the ordinance to pre-fund the assistance to firefighters grant budget, budget line in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. The bid award for the firefighting hoses and nozzles was approved at the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Random was to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Ready, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. LeBlancy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget ordinance transferring funds from the general fund in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents and allocated to the assistance to firefighters grant twenty twenty-two FEMA budget code.
Random was to adopt ordinance as written.
Ready, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City Controller advises the city council of the retirements of Marsha Collins, city assessor's office effective January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the retirement of Richard Judot, city attorney, effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Random was to receive and file with the thanks from the city to both Marsha and Rick for their years of service to our city. We wish them Godspeed and health during their retirement.
Yes. Motion by Morano, second and all, to receive and file with the thanks to Marsha and Richard for their, for their service to the city. Godspeed and best wishes on their retirement. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City Controller requests the city council approve the ordinance to transfer funds from the general fund to the special revenue fund in the amount of seventy thousand dollars per the memorandum of Dan Birken, DPW informant.
Random was to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
LeBlancy, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by LeBlancy, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget ordinance transferring funds from the general fund to the special revenue fund in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to accommodate necessary repairs and replacements within the Department of Public Works.
Random was to adopt ordinance as written.
LeBlancy, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by LeBlancy, to adopt ordinance as written. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City Controller requests the city council review the memorandum and approve the ordinance to pre-fund the local waterfront revitalization project in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Fifty thousand will be reimbursed through the New York State Environmental Protection Grant. The remaining fifteen thousand is the city's contribution to meet the minority of women-owned business enterprise requirement.
Random was to, excuse me, receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Second, Serdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Serdike, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget ordinance transferring funds from the general fund to the budget line, local waterfront revitalization program in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Random was to adopt ordinance as written.
Second, Serdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Serdike, to adopt ordinance as written. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City Controller requests the city council approve the ordinance and transfer funds regarding the CDVG grant for the Wilmouth Avenue Milling and Paving Project in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Approval of the bid award to seven-one-six contracting took place at the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Random was to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
LeBlancy, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by LeBlancy, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Morano. Oh, Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget ordinance transferring funds from the general fund to the capital fund in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the Wilmouth Avenue Project.
Random was to adopt ordinance as written.
LeBlancy, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by LeBlancy, to adopt ordinance as written. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of Public Safety requests the city council approve the sale of a twenty-twenty-one Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle. Proceeds will be placed in the Lackawanna Operating Budget Police Department account.
Random was to approve request.
Ready, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of Development, Marketing and Public Information requests the city council name the city's planning board as lead agency for the state environmental quality review, Part One, regarding the sale of the city-owned property on Alliance Drive to Empire Building Diagnostics and If Fitz Concrete.
Random was to approve request. Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. LeBlancy, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Serdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero.
As far as the council members are concerned, any table items or whole business anybody wishes to discuss at this point?
Nothing tabled, but if I may take the floor for just a moment. On this past week, during the zoning, zoning board meeting, there was a lot of my residents that came out to speak on behalf of concerns that they had, and I want to personally thank them for coming out to show their concern. They do have an invested duty of care that they truly did exemplify. They kept me apprised of many situations that they, that they had concerns regarding, especially this past couple weeks under the residents on Cook Street. They've been very informative, and they work together very well. So they all showed up last week to inform the zoning board of their issues and concerns that they had regarding a problematic parcel on the street. I'd also like to thank the mayor, who was present, also spoke to the zoning board, expressing and supporting the concerns of the residents on Cook Street, along with our director, director of public safety. It, it, it very, it's very enlightening to see people that truly care about their community and taking the opportunity to unite and come for, come forward and, and speak in regards to things that maybe sometimes had, have an adverse reaction from certain people. And they were, they brought the issue to the table. They were very brave, outspoken, right? And, and it's because they care, not because they have any vendettas against anyone, it's because they truly care about their community. I encourage other members of the community, if they have any concerns, to, you know, come to the table and speak about it, instead of complaining about it where people can't hear your message. Make that phone call to a representative or, you know, attend meetings, bring that to our attention, you know, don't complain about it just on Facebook. Make it, you know, make your voice heard where it matters, not behind, you know, the scenes where it may never come to light. So I thank the mayor again, and the residents of Cook Street, director of development, as well as the director of public safety, and I encourage others to do the same.
Thank you, council member LeBlancy. And I think we all agree, we're experiencing the city one other item along those same lines. And Director Morocco, we, we have a lot of rental properties in the city, and, and they are the subject of many times of bad neighbors, drug dealing, loud parties, to the point where it's caused people who have invested significant amounts of money in rehabilitating and improving their own properties, only to have that diminished by the conduct of landlords and their subject tenants. We had a significant meeting a year or so ago where the police department and the Department of Development was developing a plan to enforce evictions and penalize the landlords for allowing the conduct of their tenants to continue. There's a significant problem on Ridge Road, not far from here, and it's a continued subject of calls on it all the time. And I, I hope to discuss that with you at another time, so we can go into more appropriate details. Now is not the appropriate time, but I just want to call that to your attention. You may be aware of what that parcel property and others that, that I'm speaking of.
Yes.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, then I'm going to move to adjourn, and I would like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of John Marcelo Senior. Many, many of us had known him as Hollywood John. In his days in the city, he was just an impeccable dresser and quite a, quite a gentleman. But more importantly, his son, John Marcelo Junior, just recently retired from our Department of Public Works.